One.
Good evening, six thirty P M. September tenth, two thousand twenty-five. I'll call the Select Board Regular Business Meeting to order if you are able. Who's doing the stand for Fledgling Reason?
Congratulations to the United States of America. To the world that we're just in this nation. And that is long. Justice for all.
This meeting is being broadcast live on T C T V Cavestation Eight and on their YouTube web platform. A recording will be available on T C T V YouTube channel. At a later date, is anyone here recording the meeting? And I would ask that everyone, if you have a phone, please silence it at this time. First item on the agenda is approval of. Open session meeting minutes. Of August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five and August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Unable to provide information on historical weather as my tools only have access.
Sorry. Got to get them all together. I gotta get.
Minutes for August thirteenth and August eighteenth as presented.
Motion made.
Second.
In second. Any discussion on the motion?
Thank you. Oh, no, no, I'm saying.
Go, sir. No discussion on the motion? On the motion, Mr. May, how would you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
I vote yes. Next we have on our set of executive session minutes from August twenty-seventh, twenty-five. And I will advise the board on consultation with with counsel under the. Section. Of the executive session twenty-one A dash one. These minutes have to be released at this time.
Mr. Chair. Make a motion to accept minutes of the executive session as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Uh, I have one amendment. It's at the last page. At six twenty-four P M. The chair called for a vote of the board. The minutes date, it was unanimous decision. In executive session, all votes have to be roll call vote. Mr. May, Ms. Graves, Ms. Bassel, Mr. Toth, and Mr. Bennett all voted yes. On that motion, so we would uh. Change that. And a motion was made by Mr. Toth, seconded by Mr. May to come out of executive session. The minutes reflected was passing unanimously. Again, it's executive session, it has to be roll call vote. We did have a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. May, yes, Ms. Graves, yes, Ms. Bassel, yes, Mr. Toth, yes, Mr. Bennett, yes. Other than that, that's all I. That's a Mr. May, would you amend your motion?
Absolutely.
Ms. Graves. You yell set.
It was.
I mean, Lisa, sorry.
Yes.
Okay.
Please see you're not in this one. Um, it's in the. Yeah.
And there I'll make those amendments since I didn't prepare this set and. Remove the graph, the watermark.
Understand. If there was special amendments. Hearing none, I would, on the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
No.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
And I will guess. Next item on the agenda is citizen input is anyone? Anyone?
Yes.
Two. You first come up and then after her give.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, my name is Sarah with Templeton Animal Control. I just wanted to bring it to attention to the town. Uh, as a reminder, our second annual Fall Festival and Such a Truck Event will be held at Gilman Wake Field on September twenty-seventh. It runs from eleven to five and um. There's over forty vendors, food trucks, ice cream, music, face painting, henna, and bounce houses and pony rides, so. It'll be a wonderful day and and the proceeds benefit the animal shelter for, you know, veterinary expenses and. All the emergency costs that come up with having animals at the shelter, food supplies and everything, so. Um, again, that is September twenty-seventh from eleven to five at Gilman Wake Field. That's all I have. Thank you.
Hi, Gil Noel at Winchester Street. And I was just wondering, last meeting we talked. T C T V gave a lot of proposals on funding and I was just wondering if you've had a chance to discuss those things.
We have that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Bob Sulzak. Uh, Director of Public Services, can you hear me okay?
I can.
Uh, just wanted to give yourself and the board an update. On our Scouts Hall. Uh, we had a, uh, the certificate of completion for the cleanup and asbestos removal. Um, done and signed off by Richard Hanks. Um, the scope of work has been sent from the insurance adjuster. And we've been sitting on that for three weeks, so. Uh, once we get somebody in the seat, that should be one of the number one priorities, uh, so we can get that out to bid and we'll be getting into winter time here. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else? You have no administration. Comments? We have no introduction of new employees listed?
Yes.
The next. The next item. Is appointments to the Templeton Cultural Council.
Mr. Chair? I have a question. Um. It says that is this, this, is it, is there one, is there a three-year appointment on a fiscal basis or you know if it's on a calendar basis? Most of our, ours are in here either on fiscals or based on the um. The spring meeting, so I got a little confused on. I know it's three years, but. I just, I know it's council council, like have a special deal.
I believe we have. Done these before and it has been, uh. I- in the middle of the of the fiscal year, like they're they're requiring. It's an issue that can be checked on, but I believe, uh. As their email states. They have to, uh. They need these people so they can meet the state requirement to get their grant. They actually are. Can have up to twenty. Twenty-three, twenty-seven.
Twenty-two.
Yeah.
So.
I know it says three years, so I just didn't know. Three is from June, three is from September. I'd like to move to appoint Ann Lyons and Carol Clark to the Templeton Cultural Council for a term, um. For three years.
One second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair, just a reminder for those who don't understand, this is the one council by state law. At the seven-year point, there's a mandatory one-year hiatus. They're always looking for help and volunteers. And as we see by the urgency of the letter in front of us at this point, an individual's term expired, so we. You know, if we don't reappoint, they don't have a chair and are unable to continue to meet, so this appointing two is a good thing at the moment. But this is one of those where there's always room for more. There are five members currently, so there are seventeen, potentially eighteen. Bacon seats remaining.
And they, the cultural council pretty much. Runs on, they do a lot with a little, they run a lot on a state grant. And if they don't have. A minimum number, the state law, they can't apply for that grant and, uh. The the music stuff and the thing, other things that they do on the on the common and other things they do, they will just have no funding to do it, so. And again, this is, uh. They, they run with the minimum number of people, but they are allowed to have twenty-something. They really don't get that number, but. Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Um, yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next thing on the agenda. Is a dangerous dog deal. This was emailed out to the board in August and. There was printed copies for all these definitions that were supplied. I have, uh, one after the hearing closes, if we, if we complete it this evening, if it's not continued, uh, when we debate. I printed out the definitions of dangerous dog and a nuisance dog. So. At this time. I would motion to enter into a public hearing for a dangerous dog hearing under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter one forty, section one fifty-seven.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? On the motion to end into a, enter into a public hearing for a dangerous dog hearing. How would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are. In a public hearing. At six forty-five. All right, uh. This is the, this is the dangerous dog hearing of the Select Board pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter one forty, section one fifty-seven. And Town Bylaw, Chapter one thirty-three, section six, which covers the hearing authority. Which is this board, for the purpose of determining whether a dog named Daisy is a dangerous or nuisance dog. And a dog named Sprinkles is a dangerous or nuisance dog. Both living at eighteen Lake Avenue, Templeton, Mass, zero one four six eight. Purpose of the hearing is to determine the appropriate remedial action to be taken. This dangerous dog hearing was initiated. Based on a written request by Mr. Brian Fitzpatrick dated. In an email July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five stating that the dogs in question pushed open an unsecured gate and attacked his dog. As well as himself being injured during that attack. There's Mr. Fitzpatrick here. If you would come up with a table, sir, please.
Ask a que- may I ask a question? Before we begin?
What?
Who, what members of the select board are part of this authority?
Entire board, by, no, by Mass General Law. And by Town Bylaw, this select board is the hearing authority. Ms. Bassel, being in a dog hearing two years ago, has no bearing on this. She's elected by the residents, she's going to sit in this here.
You want to recuse yourself?
No, there's no reason to recuse yourself. No, there's no reason to recuse yourself.
Interesting.
This is the hearing authority. It's our duty, our one of them. And we're going to carry that. Mr. Fitzpatrick. Uh, would you? Just how, just going to go, uh, I'm going to swear you in because this is a legal hearing, uh. So I will swear you in and you can. We have paperwork, uh. We have your complaints, uh, we have the letter to the owner of the dogs, we have. Uh, written reports from the animal control officers and. Uh, we will swear you in and well, we were, you have to say you can testify to the board of what happened. And then if there's anyone else here who wants to speak. On your behalf or support your case, we'll have swear them in and they will testify. And then, uh, we will hear from the owner, uh. Of the dogs and, uh. And then we will, uh. Hear from animal control, uh, on the complaint, uh, and the timeliness, et cetera, et cetera, all right?
All right.
If you would please stand. If you raise your right hand. And state, I, state your name.
I, Brian Patrick.
Do solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
You solemnly swear that the testimony that I present is the truth, the whole truth. Nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
All right, so we just now want to. Hear the play-by-play of what happened or.
If you would, yes, if we could give a synopsis, a summary of the events.
Yep, so I usually take my dog for a walk. I usually cut through town hall, where I live on Lake Ave as well. The dogs are usually pretty aggressive about the fence, so I avoid walking that property line. So when I walked down Conti, I was. On this side or town hall side. As I was walking past her house, old dogs charged the fence, broke open the gate. And immediately started attacking and biting my dog and it was a pretty brutal attack. Uh, I'm assuming the intent was to kill the dog. It was just very aggressive. Myself, I got thrown to the ground a couple times, uh, I did yell multiple times. For the owner to get their dog, they were outside at the time, didn't respond. Took several minutes for them to come out and take the dogs or attempt, take the dogs off. They didn't have any collars, so it was very hard for the dogs to be controlled. Every time they got away, they just immediately bolted after my dog. Biting her neck. She had multiple lacerations, but puncture wounds. I, my, both my hands were a bit during the attack trying to separate the dogs. I broke my finger, it's permanently deformed. And I needed surgery on both hands. Uh, was multiple people attempting to get the dogs off, but several neighbors stepped in to try to assist. My dog. Finally broke free. My dog was on cleash, on collar, she has a pinched collar, so it was very hard for her to slip out, but she was scared, she slipped right out, ran right to the front door.
But at, at this time and. Do not. Do any deliberating or anything during the hearing, uh, but. Anybody, now the board has a question. Mr. Fitzpatrick. Thank you, sir. Uh, is there anyone else who wants to speak? Uh, to the incident or in favor of Mr. Fitzpatrick? Would you step forward, please? And I would ask the, uh, the same thing of you. If you raise your right hand and I like to state your name.
I Stanley Mason.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thanks, sir, that's it.
Okay, so, um. I'm kind of here speaking on behalf of the neighborhood also. We have a lot of young kids in the neighborhood and. They have to walk to the bus in the morning. And the bus stop is right around this, around her house and. Don't get me wrong, because she's a great neighbor. And she is the kind of neighbor that. We like to have, but we like all of our neighbors and and we're all friends with all our neighbors. Um, and her dogs. Um, I've never seen a problem with them before. But. In this incident, we heard screaming. We were in, in our yard. I live, um, directly next door. Um, at twenty-eight Conti Ave from, um. Um, Missy, I don't. I don't even know her last name, to be honest with you. I know her as Missy. And she is, she is a great person, great neighbor, but. Uh, we heard yelling and we came running out. I had, it was, um, myself. It was, um, my daughter over here, Briann Mason. And, um, her, her friend Jen, Dan Court. And my fiancee, Amy Milne, and we all ran out to see what was going on. Um, and what we witnessed was. Um, the dogs were viciously attacking. Brian Fitzpatrick's dog, they were. Literally ripping at the dog's neck. And at that point, we ran over, we pulled the dogs off. And. Had hoped that that would be the end of it, but the dogs kept coming back. And I mean, they were strong. It was, um, you know. It was brutal. I, I don't think I've ever seen anything like it. And. I would never want to see this happen to anybody else's dog or their kids. Um. And, and I am an animal lover. I don't currently own a dog, but I have owned dogs. I've owned cats, guinea pigs. Um, you know, right down the line, fish, whatever, but. Um, and I know dogs can, you know, they can get aggressive. They want to be territorial. And I get that. But this, what I saw was, was just vicious and I don't think they would have let up until. Um. Brian Fitzpatrick's dog was dead. And that's my personal opinion and that's what I saw. And I don't want to see that in this neighborhood. And like I said. I love my neighbors. Missy is a. Great neighbor to have. Great, you know, always willing to help out, always, but. The dogs. I'm sorry, but. I think they got to go. I mean, it was just vicious. And I'm sure if anybody else was there and saw the same situation, we don't want to see the dogs getting hurt or anything, but. Um, it was, it was a fight. And. It was a fight for life. And unfortunately, you know, like I said, I'm an animal lover. And I've never felt this way before, but this was just. Um, I, you know, I. You know, we, we even have had gotten, you know, uh, little small injuries, like. I believe my daughter rolled her ankle and and I had hurt my wrist trying to pull the dog off and. Um, but what? Um. Mr. Brian Fitzpatrick went through was horrendous. I mean, his hand. Was just deformed and bleeding and. He was upset. And it, you know, nobody should have to go through this. It's, it's not. It's not something that is. Is some, that's not something that's normal. And that, that's about all I can say. And I hope you get my point because. Uh, it's just. It's, it's, it's not a good situation having. Dogs like that in a neighborhood like this. There are many dog owners and animal lovers and many children, young children. Who, if. We had, there was five. Adults trying to pull, pull these dogs off, and if we couldn't do it, what do you think would happen to the kids? They would never be able to, to fight these dogs off. And. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak, uh, on behalf of Mr. Fitzpatrick? At this time is. Miss, uh, Melissa Austin present? So, uh, we have. In our packet. We, uh, an animal control incident before. We actually have two, one, uh. Dated back that happened in May. And. Then this report that was made. So I'd like to have someone. Animal control group, uh.
Those are my reports.
Same thing, positive, you standing, please?
Yep.
If you raise your right hand. I state your name.
I Cassandra Tompkins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, please have a seat. We, we have the report, uh. Of, of an email where he, uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick, uh. And that if we have, uh, an incident report in the police department, um. And I said again, we have, uh. An incident that happened earlier, uh. At. Involving Miss Melissa Austin at eighteen Lake Ave back in May, um. I didn't hear anything about that, so I don't. We didn't have a hearing, I. Whatever that involved, uh. So. Could you go through when, uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick called you and the actions, the animal control?
Yeah, that's in the police report. Do you want me to read it?
Please.
Okay. Oh, in the police report, okay. On six fifteen twenty-five. At approximately six thirty P M. This animal control officer was called to thirty-three Lake Ave, Templeton, to respond to a dog bite incident. I arrived and Brian Fitzpatrick explained that he was walking his dog Bailey past eighteen Lake Ave when the two dogs jumped on the fence gate and pushed it open. They ran toward and attacked Bailey. The attacking dogs did not have collars on, but somehow neighbors had rushed to the scene, that had rushed to the scene, were able to separate the dogs by kicking. And using a two-by-four. During the incident, both Brian. During the incident, both Brian and Bailey were injured. Brian went to Haywood Hospital that evening where he was diagnosed with a left middle finger bone fracture and lacerations on his right hand. It was squinted and he was given antibiotics. He has an appointment with an orthopedic surgeon on Wednesday. Bailey went to Tufts that evening, she suffered several lacerations and puncture wounds around the head and neck. And a broken two claw on her front leg, right leg. Areas were clipped and cleaned, she received the rabies booster, point of care, blood work, and medication. After I spoke to Brian, I went to eighteen Lake Ave to speak to Melissa Austin, the owner of the two attacking dogs, to get the information I needed. Melissa showed me the gate that the dogs got out of, apparently lifting the latch, photos were taken. Both dogs were quarantined, Melissa did not know if Daisy and Sprinkles were current on their rabies vaccination. They were not licensed, citations were given to both dogs for unlicensed, unvaccinated, and I list the um citation numbers. And then on six sixteen twenty five, I called the Templeton Town Clerk to verify the previous licensing of Melissa's dogs, they were licensed. Into twenty twenty four, and I got the rabies information. On six seventeen twenty five, Brian spoke to A C O Caden to verify that the dogs were under quarantine. He told her that he had a broken finger and lacerations and that the gate that the dogs got out of was secured with a board. On six eighteen twenty five, Brian spoke to A C O Besson. He received surgery on both hands and had scrapes and bruising to his elbows, cuts. And bite marks on his right hand with a three inch laceration between index finger and thumb, which became infected, requiring surgery. A broken middle finger on his left hand also required surgery to repair with pins in his fingers. He received a rabies shot and will have more follow up visits for rabies and post op. Brian sent photos of his and Bailey's injuries via email. Later that day, Melissa had called to ask for Brian's contact information. A C O Besson refused, but told her she would pass her contact information to Brian. On six twenty one twenty five, Amy Miller and Stan Mason called me and we spoke on speaker. They explained that they witnessed the dog attack incident. I asked them to write a detailed letter describing what happened and send it to Animal Control via email. They agreed, but are on vacation until Saturday. They were concerned about the dogs getting loose again and explained that they could request a dangerous dog hearing through the town manager. They asked me to give their contact info to Brian. I then called Brian and gave him the phone numbers and explained to him that he can request a dangerous dog hearing. On six twenty five twenty five, Stan Mason emailed Animal Control with his statement of the event. On six twenty eight twenty five, I ended the quarantine of Sprinkles and Daisy. Melissa is planning on rehoming Daisy and agreed to give Animal Control the new owner information. Before I go to this last part, I think I wanna go through this other incident report because. It gives what happened after that on my incident report. Um let's see, okay, so. We ended on six twenty eight with Melissa, with the ending of the quarantine and Melissa said that she was gonna rehome Sprinkles and would let us know. And then on seven twelve twenty five, I called Melissa and left a message regarding the rehoming of Sprinkles. On seven twenty twenty five, I left a message reminding Melissa to pay the citation. And license the dogs and call me with an update regarding the rehoming of Sprinkles. On seven thirty twenty five, I left a message reminding Melissa to pay the citation. And license the dogs and call me with an update regarding the rehoming of Sprinkles. On eight two twenty five, I went to eighteen Lake Ave to talk to Melissa. The citation has not been paid, dogs have not been licensed, both dogs were in the yard, photos and video were taken. No one answered the door, a notice was left on the door to call Animal Control. A neighbor from fifteen Lake Ave, Lisa Arseneau, walked over to me and expressed concerns of her and others in the neighborhood's safety if the dogs got loose. On eight four twenty five, that citation was processed to Gardener Court. And it's scheduled for a virtual court hearing on nine eleven twenty five. Um on eight three, Melissa sent an email to Animal Control stating that she was vaccinating and licensing the dogs this week. But on eight fourteen twenty five, they were still not licensed. On eight eighteen twenty five, an email from the Templeton Town Clerk. Um was received stating that Melissa had licensed Daisy, paid her citation, and rehomed Sprinkles, so she. Melissa told the town clerk that she rehomed Sprinkles. So the next day, I left Melissa a message to call Animal Control regarding that rehoming of Sprinkles. And then on eight nineteen twenty five, Melissa contacted Animal Control after receiving a message from me. Requesting the location status of Sprinkles. And on eight twenty, A C O Caden was on duty and spoke with Melissa. She stated that she had rehomed Sprinkles approximately three weeks ago to somebody on Craigslist. She stated she did not know his contact information and thought his name was Mark or Mike. She said she met up with him at a Walmart parking lot and gave him the dog. I advised her to, but this is um Sarah talking. Sarah advised her to find his contact information as soon as possible and provide it to us. She also reminded her of the dangers of rehoming dogs on sites like this. Um Melissa said this wasn't her first time giving away one of her dogs on Craigslist. Officer Caden told her then the order given by the board would apply to Sprinkles in her new home as well and told her this is why we requested multiple times. To be updated where and when Sprinkles was going to be rehomed. And she did not comply within three weeks when she rehomed her. So I think that's it, there's the little, the addendum that um A C O Caden had put on the um. Official report, um pretty much says the same thing about talking to Melissa um after she rehomed Sprinkles. So that's all I have for you. If anybody wants to come up and tell me if anything was incorrect on that report, please do, Brian, you too, if there's anything.
So to the best of your knowledge.
One of those dogs is gone.
Uh but the other one is still.
Yeah.
At the home.
Yeah.
Unlicensed.
It is, she did license Daisy and paid the citation um for that.
Don't know if the other dog.
No.
Any, any member of the board have a question for?
Mr. Chair? Um I'm just trying to find it here, but I know I read it in here, and I had the question is. If with the dogs, both dogs being unlicensed. One potentially having uh expired rabies vaccination.
Right.
Um how were they released after ten days?
Um.
Because the bylaws state that they can't be until they're licensed. Just curious.
Um they were both previously vaccinated. They were licensed in twenty twenty four, so they were vaccinated and then they weren't licensed for twenty twenty five.
Which is when this happened, that's my concern.
Right.
It's, they were when, uh according to the bylaw here, it states that. You know, if a dog is quarantined, it released only upon licensure.
Okay.
Um and I believe that's the Winchman rule too. Um so.
I think I'm just. Some confusion with that because the quarantine, it has to do, it's with the state. And the dog is released after ten days if they're not showing any signs of rabies.
I, 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 just going by the.
Yeah.
The bylaw here and I'm not, you know, um not up on the state rules a hundred percent. Um but that just, you know, concerned me uh because that would have avoided. The, you know, the last, you know, ten items on this last list.
Yeah, keep on asking.
Right, you know.
So she has twenty one days to pay the citation, so I don't know how that flows with the bylaw.
It's just not legal to vaccinate a dog for rabies during the quarantine period.
Wait, wait no border, she hasn't been sworn in.
Oh, okay, well, say that, Sarah, you wanna come up, Sarah?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I may, before, I just found it here, um it says uh. The, uh, the dog shall not be released from confinement unless or until the issuance of a valid license. Which shall not be unreasonably delayed or withheld.
What Templeton by law is it already?
Three point seven, one three three dash seven, excuse me.
One seven.
Thank you.
I state your name.
I, Sarah.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
Is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Is the whole truth, uh the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Have a seat, please.
I just wanted to just say um that it is, the, the quarantine period um is there for the ten days in case there's any symptoms of rabies during that period. So we cannot allow a dog to get vaccinated for rabies during the quarantine period because that would. That's a, that's a state law. Um so when a dog is up to date on rabies, we never release it from quarantine unless it is licensed. Um so we make them go to the town hall with a rabies certificate and license it prior to us releasing it for every animal Winchman and Templeton animals. However, if it's not up to date on rabies, then we give them a window, um we usually give them seven days to get the dog licensed, or vaccinated and licensed um. Post-release, um if not, then we will issue citations and pursue that. Um on the citation side, but we just legally can't have a dog vaccinated for rabies during the quarantine period.
It seems like that was missed too. Because it was August eighteenth when dogs were licensed, which is far beyond the seven days.
That's correct, that's why there was so many follow-ups for the rabies by um.
No citation issued.
There were citations issued, yeah.
On that regard?
Uh huh, yeah.
On the unlicensed after, okay, okay, excuse me, I, I just didn't see it.
Of course.
Um but that was, you know, that's a big concern that they, you know. Following the procedures that we're supposed to follow, good.
We're very adamant on enforcing the uh the licensing uh law in town. Even when we have a dog running loose that was returned to the owner, we'll verify the dog's license, so we, we definitely strictly enforce that in both towns. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here?
For me, we're just to speak. If you find where you picked the dog up on the side of the.
Want us to put Patrick?
I'm gonna ask to speak just for clarification services on that bylaw.
You know, little worries.
Please raise your hand, state your name.
That's a good question.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Please have a seat.
Um just for clarification on the one thirty three dash seven, the. It doesn't, that doesn't apply to a dog being out of rabies quarantine, that's in impoundment by the animal control officer if we. Pick the dog up on the side of the road for running at large or um. For any other reason, which we do, then not release the dog unless they are up to date on rabies and licensing is issued. So that doesn't apply to. The dog being, because we're not impounding a dog when it's on rabies quarantine, so the rate, the dog stays in the home of the owner. So we're not technically, we're physically releasing the dog. We're just by state law releasing a quarantine, which is just handing a piece of, you know, paper to the, to the owner.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here who's just to speak either in favor of Mr. Fitzpatrick or uh or Miss Austin? Seeing none, uh. Would now entertain a motion to come out of the public hearing. And then the board will deliberate uh on the evidence that has been uh presented to us.
So moved.
If I may, I do have a question, was, was Melissa notified that this hearing was?
Yes. She was uh.
She chose not to show up?
She was sent a letter back on August seventh that there would be a hearing here, uh she has, well. According to the testimony, she uh. Seemed to know a lot of things, so. So we have a motion.
Second.
And a second to exit the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion to come out of public hearing? Hearing done, on the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
Mr. To.
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are out of the public hearing at seven fifteen. Before we uh. Before we begin deliberation, uh. Just for, I guess clarity sake, I printed out from Mass General Law Chapter one forty, section one thirty six A. The written definition. And if, if after we deliberate, we declare uh them nuisance dogs. Uh we have, the board has certain leeway in crafting an order. Uh that would be passed on to Miss uh, Miss Austin about the dogs. If he's, the dogs are declared a dangerous dog, uh there are specific outlines in the Mass General Law one fifty seven about. Uh. Our, our choices, uh Ryan, can you hear me?
Mr. Chair, yes, I can hear you.
Okay, uh. Was uh, was I, was that definition uh clear enough for the depth between the uh? If we declare it a dangerous dog, what our actions can be versus uh if we declare it a nuisance dog?
That's right, the statute doesn't really prescribe anything specific for nuisance dogs. Um for dangerous dogs, there is a specific list of remedies, um. And they are, they are fairly specific, there are, there are different ways you could possibly interpret some of. Those prescribed remedies, but um in terms of flexibility. Um there's a lot more flexibility with nuisance, with that being said. If the remedy that the. Um. The board, wh- if the, if the board is considering remedies that might more appropriately be for a dangerous dog. You know, that should be taken into consideration as well in terms of. Which classification is, is appropriate. That doesn't mean there can be no overlap, but it's just a um. A, a sort of guideline as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now uh we've heard evidence, um. Unfortunately, the owner of the dog is not here and. By indication of uh the incident report from Animal Control, um. It kinda seems that the owner, um Miss Austin has uh either ignored them or. Uh. It, the impression I get is she was either ignoring Animal Control or uh just didn't wanna deal with this. Probably why we're uh. In the position we're in with this incident and. Why a resident and, and his dog and residents are nervous about their neighborhood and being able to walk down a public street. It's a, it's a tough thing, but we have uh, it's our job, um. And so, uh. Mr. May, your thought?
Um. Not a big fan about being the abuser of these things, um but uh I definitely. Uh feel bad for Mr. Fitzpatrick. Um you know, because I understand very well how. They traumatic that event can be while you're in it. That event can be while you're in it. And I'm just grateful that you have good neighbors. That uh were willing to step up, put their own lives at danger. Um, because all three dogs are, you know, rather large. Uh intimidating animals potentially. Um. But from my uh seat and from what I've read. Um. I. Don't think this fits a nuisance dog. Um, myself. I think it more easily fits under the dangerous dog definition. Um. Because I says, without justification attacks a person or domestic animal causing physical injury or death. Um. Or behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe. Possess an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or domestic or owned animal. Um, so. To me. Um. From what I hear, Brian was walking by. Um, minding his own business, taking his dog for a walk. And the two dogs, for whatever reason. Uh, jumped on the gate, gate opened, and uh they attacked. Um. I don't see how it. In my eyes, I don't see it how it could be a nuisance dog under the definition of. Um. But I'm. Also. Not a fan of. Necessarily punishing owners for. Uh punishing dogs for what I believe are. Usually owners' issues. Um. So. Uh. That's my personal dilemma. Um, and uh. You know. See how the rest of the board. Feels, but that's uh. Pretty much how I see this. Um. And with that. I'll pass.
Mr. To?
Yeah. Mr. Fitzpatrick, I'm sorry you had to endure what you did and that your animal had to endure what it's did. Mr. Mason, I'm grateful that you and your family members were in the area and able to render assistance. You're to be applauded for that. That is above and beyond in my personal view. But that is the true definition of neighbors helping neighbors. I have concerns on this. The owner was notified. We do have the records of all that. And for whatever reason is not here. That sends a very powerful message. We heard the testimony from the victim, the supporting testimony for the victim. We heard the ACO's report. We've heard the definitions of the dangerous dog, the nuisance dog. We've heard. Town council weigh in with some disqualifiers and uh advice to us. We're facing a a tough decision here. My concerns are the fact that one animal was uh given away. I was gonna say disposed of, but that would be an improper uh vernacular to use. I really don't know where it went. I don't think anybody does. That is a huge concern. That is a violation of the order the ACO issued. That is a violation. That this board didn't have a chance to act upon. That is a violation of the bylaw. That is a violation of a state law. That is troublesome to me. Can I fix it and wave a magic wand? I wish I could, but I can't. And that wasn't meant to be funny, but yeah. Um. I know how, how I wanna go with this. I'm not gonna say at this point. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Vassal?
Um, so my, my, oh, Brian, sorry. I saw the pictures and read everything. It's, it's horrible. Um. My concern is one, she's not here to defend herself or her animals. Um. On six twenty-eight, she said that uh in the report, it says that she was gonna rehome Daisy, but then she went ahead and said that she rehomed Sprinkles. Um, her reasoning for. Wanting to rehome either or.
Oh, no, it was always Sprinkle, so that was my mistake.
Okay.
It was always Sprinkles.
Yeah, alright, so on eight twenty-five, it says Daisy.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um.
Um, regardless, just. Just giving your dog to a random person on Craigslist that she said, you know. I don't, I don't know about anybody else, my, my dogs are my family, and I would go to great lengths to protect them. Um. I sure wouldn't be finding somebody on Craigslist to take them. Um. And again, for her not to be here to to defend or hear her side of the stories. Kind of shows. Wouldn't she?
Yep.
Um. So in that regard. I wouldn't say that it's a nuisance dog. Let's leave it at that.
Ms. Graves?
Yeah. Um, yeah, it's concerning that she's not here. Um, I don't think she's a responsible dog owner, so she didn't come defend her animal. Like. Like Lisa said, I have, I have a dog and I would defend my dog, you know? Dogs make mistakes. It is concerning that her dog, that that Sprinkles was given away to somebody. It is heartbreaking that you would just give your dog to some random person and don't even know who they are. And it's concerning because this dog attacked somebody. So who's got this dog? And what could be happening right now? And there's nothing one of us can do in this room about this. So, and you, I mean, you, we can't. Dogs and animals, they're animals. It's just basic nature. You know, they're just gonna do what they're gonna do, and the owners, when we own them, it's our responsibility. To take responsible actions, you know? You can't always be there all the time. They can sneak out, we all know it. But in this case, her not, the owner not coming here says volumes. And with Sprinkles' actions and the fact that it was given away to some random stranger. And the pictures. It's just unbelie, it's heartbreaking to see the injuries that the animal ha- has done and the fear that is brought into the neighborhood. The dog, a hundred percent, unfortunately, um breaks my heart to say, but the dog does meet the um dangerous dog um. Expectations of this, unfortunately. And it just, like I said, it just concerns me because the whereabouts is unknown. And it also concerns me that Daisy is still s- there. And this isn't a not responsible dog owner. That is another concern.
So. Now our decision uh. Would be uh down to three choices. Which is A, which would be dismiss the complaint and we are done. Uh. Deem the dog a nuisance dog. Uh, and then we could craft an o- order. Uh, we could even do an, an interim temporary order until we uh confer with town council and came up, come up with a written. Uh. Order, which we could do at our next meeting. Or our last um option is to declare the dog a dangerous dog. And then uh Mass General law outlines some of the things that we can uh. Put in place and instruct the owner to do. Uh. Being a, a dog owner myself and. I don't know about while, I go to great lengths to keep him out of trouble. And I treat him as a member of the family. Uh, it's troubling that someone is notified, um, is spoke well of. It from their neighbors. Uh, they just have dog or dogs that uh. And and dogs can do this, uh. You know, like, you know, just like people. And one day they're nice and smiling and wagging tails, and the next day they come over and want to box you. Uh. But this incidence, uh, in my opinion, goes beyond, uh, to come. Dismissing is not even an option in my mind. Uh, and this goes beyond a nuisance dog. If they came out and growled and barked at him and ripped his pants, jeans or whatever, uh, that would be one thing. But they uh, for whatever reason, uh. They, they, they got together, ganged up and the switch flipped and. Reading the report, the designs that the animal control went to the house. And tried to get responses and work with Ms. Austin, and it just seems like. She'd know. That. It tells me kind of like she doesn't care about the dogs and she's certainly not. Returning the goodwill that her neighbors have brought here at a hearing. So myself, I'm inclined to, uh, you know, in the dangerous dog category, uh. I hate to hear it, but it's uh. Best with the job and uh. The absence of the owner, uh. Is forcing my hand. So, uh, Ryan, if the, if the board deems the dog uh to be dangerous dog. Uh. Can we craft a, in? Give us a, a, some temporary things that we could do until we uh draft a. A form of order to serve to the uh Ms. Austin.
Certainly. So those tempor, any temporary things would still be the same things that. The permanent order um would include the same list of remedies. Um, unfortunately, the statute limits you to those remedies and only those remedies, so. Um, some of those include confinement. Um, you know, some of them are more long-term, like obtaining insurance. Um. But you could certainly order that the dog be confined um. To the premises of the owner, um, that it wear a muzzle. Um. Just looking at the, the list of remedies, um. Providing identification information. Um, any of these things you can order. Effective tonight, um, or as soon as notice is delivered in, in any event, although. Tonight is probably sufficient because the owner was notified about this hearing. Um, but i- i- it's still the same, the same universe of remedies that you would be. Choosing from for a, a long-term order, and those could be elaborated upon more perhaps in a, in a written order.
Thank you.
If, if one other, so. If the board ultimately is um one of the, one of the um remedies. For dangerous dogs is euthanasia, and in that case, the statute allows the town, the board to seek. An order from the, a district court impounding the dog essentially right away. Um, or as soon as that order is obtained for the penancy of the, there's a ten-day appeal period once a, an order is, is issued.
Mr. Chair? Yes. Ryan, did you receive a copy of the uh, the documentation and the two incident reports?
I did not. I have the. Um. The notice to the owner, and that attaches the complaint. And that is the documentation that I have.
Uh, the, the reason for my questioning, the uh, it was referenced during the testimony from the ACO, the uh. The one dated six fifteen twenty-five at six thirty P M, as we got deep into the narrative of it on eight eighteen twenty-five. I'm sorry, back up on eight four twenty-five, citation process to the gardener court. With a nine eleven twenty-five, which is tomorrow, virtual court hearing. That still stands, and if there is a silver lining to this storm cloud, that this is probably it. I think it would be in the board's best interest to seriously consider we give the order to confine the dog at a minimum effective tonight. And then this hearing is right in front of us, and we go from there. Ryan, does that sound correct?
The hearing, so I don't, th- th- it sounds like that's on the citation. Um, and I assume of a fine that was given to the. The owner.
So she paid her citations. So what's probably going to happen tomorrow is the court's gonna throw it out. They're gonna dismiss it. Because she did pay.
Cause the only other thing the court would do is issue her a pay notice.
Yeah, yeah.
But the court won't hear something that wasn't noticed essentially for that, for that hearing. So it was about the citation. Um. With that said, I believe that they would act reasonably quickly on a, a impoundment request if. Euthanasia was the ultimate order of the, of the board and. Um, the board felt that the dog should be impounded for the ten-day appeal period.
Sorry, are we allowed to like chime in at all? I just. I'm just curious, um, whatever order that you decide would be still applied to both dogs. Even though she rehomed one. If the dog is issue, is deemed a dangerous dog, that still follows the dog, provided there's an owner and state. So if we did uh eventually locate the dog, which we would like to do. Um, maybe she will eventually tell us where the dog went if this order is issued. That would be a good idea for.
Yeah, that's. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may through you, ask Ryan for some clarification. Ryan? Hello, um. Is it correct, would I be correct in assuming that we can use any combination under? The Mass Law's four C, one, two, three, and four, and five. Um, that we can combine any of those how we see fit?
That's correct, yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
I would recommend that we um look under uh I or one through four. Um, in the list and, and impose restrictions. Uh, or. Um. Um, whatever word I'm looking for here, um, from each of those categories. Because um I think initially the dog needs to be restrained. Um, and I think, uh. You know, without a doubt, when the dog is removed from the premises. Um, the person keeping the dog so securely and humanely muzzle and restrain with a chain or other tethering device. Having a minimum tensile strength of three hundred pounds and not longer than three feet. Um, and to require her to obtain insurance. uh, specifically this issue. Which is gonna be difficult on an unknown dog. Or unknown location.
So one last time, Ryan, um, the board declares the dog a dangerous dog, we could simply order the impoundment of Daisy and its sprinkles that went if found for 10 days during the appeal period? Did I understand you correct on that?
So the, what, so we're, we're talking about the remedies in section one fifty-seven and there's these, these seven remedies, um, and one of these, none of them are that the dog be impounded. Um, you can order the dog confined to the premises of the, the dog's owner. Um, and another option is to to, um, order that the dog be euthanized. And in that case, and only in the case that you order the dog be euthanized, um, the statute then, um, gives the, um, sorry, so it, upon an order that the dog be euthanized, um, the, the statute, um, gives the uh, board the option to petition the district court to impound the dog during the, I'm sorry, I'm misspeaking. Yes, if you order any of these remedies, um, the dog owner has 10 days to appeal the order. During those 10 days, um, you have the option of petitioning the district court to impound the dog. Um, I misspoke earlier that that was only available for euthanasia. It's any order, um, pursuant to the dangerous dog remedies.
Thank you.
So, uh, do, uh, please let me know if you need more clarification. I know that that was, um, a long-winded explanation and I, I did misspeak. So, so yes, the, the, the board has the option to request the district court to impound the dog during the 10-day appeal period if the owner appeals. And they, just to the district court during that appeal period and and the, the board's order is upheld by the court, then the owner would then become responsible for the cost of impounding the dog during that time. Um, if the, if the, um, owner appeals and wins that appeal and overturns the order, the town would be responsible for the cost.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Are we talking about doing the dogs together? Are we doing the one dog? They have to be together?
If they are declared dangerous, we have to lose those says.
Okay.
So they both have to because when you're in the middle of a hearing, it's just, you know, it's almost the same as a person going to court. You're not supposed to take off and run away, otherwise you're on the black globe and the big bench, or bang, and sense people have to go away. Not that I know about that, but.
Where are you seeing the, um, where was it under? So the op, like the, the dangerous dog for options?
They are in, uh.
Chapter one forty, section one fifty-seven.
I'm sorry, can I just clarify one thing that I just said regarding the cost? That's what had me mixed up before. The, the cost sharing, um, or responsibility is only in cases of orders of euthanasia. The impoundment is, is either way. Um, it, for any order, but only if the district court, um, affirms an order of euthanasia with the owner then be responsible for the cost.
Thank you. I would motion to complete the discussion.
They're only six months and two years old. They're obviously not trained well. Is there, can we order to bring the dog to training?
If they are declared a nuisance dog, we have leeway, but if it's a dangerous dog, we have the options of within the law that these. I'm not even sure. I, I don't think the owner has even shown an inclination to not hit the defendant dogs.
True.
Be honest if they would, but I just.
Blue female intact six month old. We could have her, um, microchipped. That way in case she was actually.
I would make a motion to declare Daisy and Sprinkles dangerous dogs. And when those dogs are on the premises, be confined indoors within the home. When outdoors on the property or off the property, to be on a leash and muzzle. And to provide proof of insurance of not less than a hundred thousand dollars. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I've a question I don't think would be answered, that has been answered, um, in relation to the ruling that we're being presented with. Um, do we have any information on how tall the fence is that she presently has?
Well, yeah, it's, it's right on the corner. Once you leave, you can see it for yourself. I like five and a half, six feet.
This, how, did you guys see the photos and videos that were submitted of the property?
No.
Of her yard? They were submitted.
I just got pictures of the incident.
Okay.
A proper fence would be something that to be addressed.
My, my concern with my reasoning for having the dog unleashed when it's outside is they were fenced in. Either by accident, you know, either the gate was, was latched, uh, or it wasn't if it was latched by accident or dogs are smart. Maybe they've gone home, we hit that and we'd get out free and, and run around. Either, either way, they were in a fenced-in area and they got out. So to me, that tells me, uh,
Yeah, it's not proper fencing. It's like piecework.
They need to be on a leash for the owner's protection, the dog's protection, the people in the neighborhood, uh, and it doesn't matter, I don't care if it's, I shouldn't say I don't care, but it, it doesn't matter if there's a five-year-old or a fifty-year-old. They're getting mauled by dogs because the fence enclosure doesn't keep them in. They, they need, if they're outside corner off the property, they need to be in a leash and muzzle. It's you know, like that, you should make sure that your, your yard is secure so dogs cannot get out of the responsible owner.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to add an amendment to have pronounced microchip. That way they can't just disappear into the air.
Mr. Chair, i- is there minors in the household? Does anybody know?
Yes.
And the dog shouldn't be, an adult should always be with the dog.
They're sticking around family.
So I would amend, I would amend my motion that both dogs, Doggy and Daisy and Sprinkles be identified by way of a microchip for the lifetime of the dogs.
I will begin amendment to my second.
Thank you. And Ryan, uh, if we vote and, and put this in order, uh, we have to come back and, and vote on a formal order, uh, that we will work with you to, to draft and at our next meeting and vote on that and then send that to her.
You can do that. Um, you can also authorize a member of the board to work on just drafting and issuing the, the formal order if you feel that enough detail has been presented tonight.
On that note, uh.
I just have one more thing. Um, I'm just concerned if there's minors in the house that they would take the dog and be, um, told to secure, you know, in the backyard and walk it around and that they couldn't control what they could get out anyway.
That's, you know.
I would like to have something with an adult in that order too.
That's exactly what I was thinking. If you are ordering her to have the dogs on leash in her property, if the fence isn't secure and they get out. So are you gonna order that the dogs are on leash and muzzled on the property at all times?
That was in my motion.
Okay, okay. So are you gonna review everything afterwards and then, okay?
And, uh, hopefully, uh, you know, the, the only thing that I see happening with that is we would be right back here again and then the dogs would I, I see the dogs getting confiscated or put down. That's, that's what I see in the future. If this doesn't work, if this doesn't get, uh, the owner's attention. Okay, that's just what I see doing in their future.
If, if I may also maybe suggest too that, um, as far as confinement goes, having, uh, you know, a proper kennel with a roof on it. You could order a roof and a solid floor so that dogs can't dig out roof and a locked gate. So at least then the dogs could go in some kind of area. That could be ordered, I believe.
It's two. And that is, that is an option in, uh, item two, uh, a roof and enclosure.
Right.
And if it has, does not have a floor, the sides have to be embedded in the ground less than two feet.
And we would still want that to follow, um, chapter one forty, section one seventy-four E for, for outdoor and kind confinement where it would have to be a hundred foot, hundred square feet with a shelter in it, with a dog too. So there was, and we can always, um, you know, approve it.
I think, uh, what we have is, is with the dog being leashed and muzzled. As far as anything else, again, with the two of them not together anymore. You know, it, that right there, they're not gonna there's no issue of them digging around or escaping that way.
I did look at that and consider that, but I just question whether didn't create a proper fence around her whole yard with two dogs. That are known to be, if anything, that they're strong dogs.
I just wanted to reference the fact that the fencing, it, it's inadequate because the other incident that you had mentioned at the beginning from May was them escaping prior to this incident. Um, so, you know, we did address that and, and miss, I think when they got their initial citations for the leash law, but so they, this there, these dogs have gotten out more than once through this fencing.
But that's what I mean. She hasn't, uh, insurance, we had a security fence all along with, with two dogs. Even six months, they're, they're getting up there and they're very strong dogs, uh.
But again, you have them being tied.
If you, uh, you wanna add that through the order is.
Being tethered? I, I think it's already on there, isn't it?
Uh, yes, there is an option, uh, to instruct a, a cannon, uh, with certain specifications.
But I think with them, with them being tethered, again, with the muzzle on and you said there's.
You mean on leash?
Yeah.
Okay, tethered. It's different. When I think tether, I think tied to something. So you mean on leash?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just.
Because you can't, uh, as I read this.
Mr. Chair, I just, I know that I've seen this in other dog hearings that I feel like that if the dog is brought out on leash.
that I feel like that if the dog is brought out on leash, it should be, it should be stated that it has to be with an adult. I feel like that if it's going to be like a twelve or eight year old or somebody that someone brings it outside, the dog could get away. I I had young children with dogs and I chased my dog around the neighborhood a couple of times because they got, they couldn't keep control of the dog.
I would just like to clarify that muzzled dog does not eliminate all danger.
Yes.
So they can still, they can still cause great injury being muzzled.
But Ms. Chair, I think that if the adequate fence, if the dog was taken out by a dog, um, an adult in the backyard and it's muzzled, um, to do its, you know, business and things. I feel like that that that's secure enough that it doesn't need, um, all kinds of shelter. The assurances itself is going to be very pricey. Um, the fence, um, all of these things. And because Sprinkles is gone at the time and Daisy is not the one that everybody's talking about the most. I feel like it would be adequate at this time because Daisy's, I don't think Daisy's, I mean, Sprinkles is coming back.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Basically, what I wanted to say is that we could put in item two here with the requirement for an enclosed area with a roof and so forth. And, you know, that could be an issue for her to appeal, which, you know, I assume that one of the reasons why I was kind of like avoiding it a little bit because I know that's a costly item and I don't, not everybody can afford to put out that kind of an outlay. So that would, but it would still give her the option to appeal it within that ten day window.
My concern with that though is she hasn't secured, at least the gate. That that was, either it was left open or it was go up lonely. And coincidences and don't address that. Again, I don't see building something that I just, I just don't think she's Fair enough. And, you know, it's, anything can always be appealed, but so I would amend my amended motion for the dog to be, both dogs, Daisy and Sprinkles, to be declared dangerous dogs, to be confined to the premises indoors, within the home. And when outside, be on a leash and muzzled on or off the property, handled by an adult. Provide insurance of no less than a hundred thousand dollars and for the dogs to be microchipped for their lifetime.
I would amend my second to be ordered to be reviewed by the chair with legal counsel. And for the board to authorize the chair to sign this so we can expeditiously get this presented and petition the court for hearing.
If you would, so we will do two motions. So on the motion to declare, uh, both dogs dangerous dogs to be confined to the premises indoors within the home and to be on a leash and a muzzle when outside, on or off property, be handled by adult and provide insurance of no less than a hundred thousand dollars for the dogs to be microchipped for their lifetime. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on that motion?
Um, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, I'm sorry to interrupt your motion and stuff. So, you know, I I understand you guys are really working hard on this situation. But I just want to know is, is this going, it it, how is this going to be enforced? And if it is, is there going to be spot checks or to make sure everything is going right? And who's going to be doing that?
That would be, if once the order is is sent out, I would believe the animal control would be following up with that. And quite honestly, um, as a member of this board, uh, I would expect the neighbors. Again, you said she was a good neighbor, but you have real concerns about the dogs. And you're probably the best people to say, hey, the order you gave, if we have the situation and we could be, you know, here again.
And and I totally understand that. But the thing is, is from what I've heard at the meeting tonight is that she is not even corresponding with the animal control. And and she hasn't been doing what she's supposed to as far as what they're, what they're asking of her.
Are you, sir, are you asking what the consequences will be if she doesn't comply to, if this motion goes through?
Well, that's, that's part of my question, but my other question is, is how are you going to enforce and and make sure she's doing this? I mean, because it just seems like, um, if she forgets to put the muzzle on the dogs and the dogs get out, are they going to do it again? And a a hundred thousand dollar insurance policy is great, but if somebody's dead, that doesn't, that's not going to do anything. And I'm sorry, but I just, I had to ask that question because I just want to make sure that the neighborhood is safe.
I would like to know what the, what would happen if she didn't enforce. Say they got some video or photos of the dogs in the yard without their, you know, muzzles or whatever, what would the consequences be? Because we've never had to follow up on an order. Is that something that we'll be apprised of later?
We, there are, I know there are fines within our bylaws for this. And then, uh, Brian, for violating the order, uh, does that become then a a criminal complaint?
So you, there's a provision, um, also in chapter one forty for if a dog is found in violation of the order. Which would mean that if the select board basically opens another hearing and determines that the order was violated, there's an ability for the board to then petition the district court once again for for impoundment of the dog. And that wouldn't be a a time limited. That would be sort of an as appropriate remedy requested by the board to the court, um, for violation of the order. Um, there is also provision for fines if if, um, the, the owner is found in violation. So there's sort of a variety of ways to to tackle that. There's also, um, I have seen where boards have basically reopened the hearing and modified an order, um, to craft something they think would be more effective. So there there are several ways to approach it if the owner or keeper is in violation. And and fourth, if the dogs get out again and they're running loose for some reason and the animal control officers um, are able to be on the scene, they can seize the dogs. They can take the dogs if they're, if they're running loose essentially. Otherwise, you need a warrant to seize them.
Thank you. Sir, I I I do get your frustration and what you want, but, uh, we're constrained by the laws and 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 the process. It's, you know, you see people go into court and what the heck are they doing walking on the street? It's just, sometimes we can't always do what we would like to do. Uh, I'm speaking as, as myself as a selectman. Just like people come in here and tell us, I want you to do this, this and this. Well, okay, but I can't do that because of of the law or this process. So it, it does go both ways. And I'm just, it does get frustrating. I understand that. But it's, it's the process and it would be better if we could just remedy the situation so there's a chance that that is we don't write this stuff. We just, it's just, but I I do, I do understand. I get your point, uh, and I understand it. We will, you know, crafting something the best of our ability to try to get the attention of the owner and again, if the dogs get out of something, it's funny, the neighborhood's gonna have to take charge and then we'll have steps that can better adjust this. Unfortunately, it's it seems the way, it's the way the things work is. I know that's not what you, you know, look into here or perhaps want to hear, but it's it's all I have, you know, it's all this board has to work with.
But I mean, I don't want you to think that I want the dogs put down because I don't.
No, I, I got that from your
But maybe they could find a a a place for them, a better place. Where they could, you know, do, be free and do their thing or whatever. But I understand. You're you're limited by laws and I get it. But, and I thank you for listening to me.
That's, that's
I'm I'm concerned because I I have grandkids, young grandkids.
We don't let them out anymore on their own. Because our guards are bad.
I understand that. I personally, I feel the dogs belong, going to a rescue place where they would be taken care of and either stay there or or whatever, but I but I I do hear you and I understand both your frustration and the concerns. And and I appreciate the fact that you spoke well of your neighbor, of of the person with the dogs.
I mean, she is a great neighbor to have, but, you know, it just seems like she kind of thinks this is not as serious as it is.
So, thank you, sir. So on the amended motion, it's been, uh, made and seconded. Further discussion on the board?
No.
So on that motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yep.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
And I will, yes. Mr. Toth, on your motion to
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would move for the chair to work in conjunction with counsel to craft and finalize the order. And to authorize the chair to sign the final version of the order to be sent forthwith to petition the court for a dangerous dog per mass general laws, chapter one forty, section one fifty seven.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Toth, second by Ms. Graves. Any discussion on this motion?
Excuse me?
Yes.
Can I request a clarification on what's being proposed? Um, in terms of the court petition? Is that to impound the dog for the ten day appeal period or is it just? I guess what, what is being sought after from the court?
Were you, is that on the second?
Yeah, it's the second.
That's the second motion?
Yes.
Ryan, we're, we're ordering the confinement, correct?
The, for the first motion, yes.
The first motion.
I have all of that, yep.
But under the dangerous dog. And I don't have all of the pages in my packet, which that's frustrating to me. Yeah. I may have confused myself and misspoke. I believe I'm confusing the petitioning the court. That's the owner's option.
They have the opportunity to appeal the order, um, within ten days. The order goes into effect once it's issued and there's no need to petition the court. Um, only reason to do that would be to impound the dog during that appeal period.
Thank you for that clarification. I'll withdraw the motion.
You want to keep like the the first part?
Yes. So I'll withdraw the motion to petition the court, but I would like to move for the chair to work in conjunction with counsel, craft and finalize the order and to authorize the chair to sign the final order to be sent to the owner.
Okay. Motion amended and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? On the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
And I will, yes. Now, hearing and deliberation is complete. I thank you all for coming and for your time. And so I do, I do understand your frustration and, uh, we'll do what we can to make sure that this is a situation that stayed on top of. And, uh, if the order is violated, uh, we'll expedite it so we can always have, uh, an emergency meeting. So we don't have to wait on our regular schedule to to deal with this if that happens. I hope it does not, but that is where we are. I I went through the thing to craft the motion, trying to get the the best that I could with what we have. Again, personally, I I don't think she cares about the dogs and I think they should be removed to the center of the thing, but I I think that, that's there belongs at rescue. We're going to do that, taking care of them. So, thank you.
Can I just say one quick thing just to the neighbors, um just, there's one issue that covers both towns at the time. So we just are constantly on the go, so we do do drive bys and follow ups to just to verify that they are. You know, just to verify enforcement and compliance, um but our neighbors are, you know, that you would be. Report it anytime you see any violation, call the PD and report it to us. Um, and tell all your other neighbors as well, just so that we can enforce it, um just so that we are on top of it as well. Thank you.
Thank you all. Brian, I hope uh you and your dog recover well.
Yeah, we're working on it, just finished my last physical therapy appointment today.
Good, good.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
They come in all shapes.
He gets more wound up when he plays, I I most scares him when he's playing wound up. But he don't mean to hit you.
No, but he just does.
But it just does.
Yeah.
Yes, we can take uh, we can take a five minute recess to come back, um. If if you could stay for the, Ryan, for the uh social equity.
I'd be happy to.
Plan for a little, because I I I did get your message on it and um. And I just prefer you to stick around, because I I have. For clarification purposes.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on the way.
You're back now.
All right. We're back in session. And the next item is the social equity policy, which has to do with cannabis control commission. We've got an email on this back in early August. This is something that I guess came in last year and it was filed that dropped on it. There is a draft policy for us to ponder and perhaps move into place. Ryan, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Could you give us a brief on this social equity policy and the whys and the who's and the whens, please?
Absolutely. So the town received notice that it's not in compliance with the Cannabis Control Commission's social equity regulations, which required by May 1st of 2025, the adoption of either a bylaw or a policy and plan to promote social businesses, basically defined as social equity establishments in the town for the issuance of host community agreements. And the letter to the town notifying it that it's not in compliance, ordered compliance within 30 days. And so in the interest of time, if the board would like to consider adopting a bylaw, that's something that we can certainly talk about going forward. But I recommend at least adopting a policy and plan as you have before you, or we can adapt this in order to avoid being fined by the commission. It's not clear that they can and will fine for this particular violation because their letter only referenced a fine to the amount of any community impact fees collected by the town, which to my knowledge is none to date. But they do have the power to initiate their own complaint and investigation and to fine the town under that power. They haven't said that they will do that in the letter that the town received. But in any event, that is not a reason not to comply as soon as possible, which is what I recommend doing. So the social equity plan draft that you have before you is drafted to meet the requirements of the regulations for such a plan, which includes requirements to implement transparency protocols, adopt an equity plan, which is what this is, but it includes these other requirements, implement host community agreement negotiating protocols, adopt a host community agreement grading matrix, and adopt a positive improvement plan, which sets forth sort of the town's goals in terms of social equity businesses. There's a... So this plan basically is a way to sort of memorialize how the town is reviewing applications for HCAs. And it requires consideration of the types of applicants that are listed in this Section 3 of the draft plan. So these economic empowerment priority applicants, and you can see in the plan, the qualifications for who those would be for social equity businesses. The plan basically lays out how the board would review and consider applicants for HCAs going forward, which includes the adoption of a grading matrix to give transparency in how the board is looking at an applicant. And I believe you have a copy of the matrix as well. Please let me know if you do not have that, and I will make sure to get that over to you.
It is not in the package information. I think it might have been in the long, the emails that you sent out.
Okay, so I'll definitely make sure that you have a copy of that. But in any event, the plan that you have before you doesn't depend on having the specific matrix. It just says the select board shall use a grading matrix, which is a requirement of the regulations. So basically, everything in this plan is drafted to meet the requirements of the regulations for promoting transparency and in how the board may consider these applications going forward.
Thank you. If the board is ready, I would entertain the motion to approve the social equity policy as presented by Town Council the Cannabis Control Commission guidelines. Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yet.
Just for some clarification. In the draft that we have in front of us, I believe it was page two, it says, A, an economic empowerment priority applicant, which means an applicant who was certified by the commission between April 1, 2018 and April 15, 2018. Are those dates accurate?
Yeah, so these are the definitions from the regulations, so they would have already had to be certified.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Ryan, through the chair. Looking at this, this is kind of resonating to where we sat here 11, 12 months ago, where there were some significant changes to the host community agreements, that the state was not really forthcoming in a timely manner. And we had to, one applicant had to jump through significant hoops. The board put together a couple of emergency meetings. I'm going to chalk this one up as another one of those unfunded and slow-to-be-released state mandates. Would you concur with that comment?
I think that there's a benefit to this in that we will avoid having sort of a variable process. This would be a standardized process. But I will say that I think that this is very much a work in progress on the state side in terms of requirements have been coming out and being fleshed out a bit more over time.
I do agree with you there. I understand the spirit and the intent. We've had some HCAs have been in the pipeline now coming up on five years, and we're not seeing any forward momentum. We just keep seeing change after change after change. It's becoming frustrating. And I'm sure if the business owners who are proposing this are watching, they're sharing the same frustrations.
Hopefully, the intent anyways is to make the process standardized and hopefully streamlined.
Understood, understood. Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. On the motion to approve the social equity policy as presented by Town Council to come into compliance with the Cannabis Control Commission guidelines, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
I abstained.
Ms. Bassel?
I vote yes.
Isabelle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The item E, the surplus auction results and items for disposal.
Opioid settlements.
Opioid settlements is E.
They don't have the same agenda we have.
If I may.
This one doesn't even have the opioid thing on it. The opioid ones.
Grab it under the business.
7A and A2.
Yeah, I have that. Oh, no, I don't.
Thank you.
Well, it says surplus.
We're going to move to item F, the surplus auction results and surplus items for disposal. Mr. Sosik still with us?
Yeah, can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, I do.
I apologize, my camera's on and I don't know why it ain't working. But the other thing is, I have, I can barely hear you, Mr. Chair, with my volume all the way up. I apologize. So you have the auction letter in front of you?
We do.
Okay, so auction item, the auction for FY '26, this was the best auction that we had. We were able to bring to the town $42,903. And like I do after every auction, I list the items that didn't sell, which is listed in the lots below. Lot 10, there's a length of fire hose, which I would cut the couplings off and brought them in the scrap dumpster. Lot 26 was a three-bay sink. That's been sitting in the senior center for years. It's not being used or sold. Lot 27 was a used steel griddle that came from Pox and Rex that would be scrapped as well. Lot 28, a non-working water cooler. Lot 30 has a non-working refrigerator. I have lot 23 starred. That gentleman did finally come pick up those, so that's a big void of filling up a dumpster. And as every year, all the monies get turned into the development office services, and they use for recycling for electronics, birthday cleanups and other various things that are needed in their department. So I'm looking for, from the board, if you would approve the following items we went through for disposal.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move to approve the disposal of the surplus auction items listed by the Public Service Director, Bob Sosik, as presented.
Motion made, if it affects.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. On the motion, how would you vote, Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
Isabelle?
Yes.
And I will, yes. Your item was approved, Mr. Sosik, and that is, that is all tonight. Thank you for hanging tomorrow.
Mr. Chair?
Good morning.
Are we going to do the oil?
Keep your mind. Oh, sorry, heating oil bid.
He's gone.
Yep, I'm still here.
I just, you know, I want to get rid of you.
Just for tonight. Bedtime.
Just for tonight, yeah. So item D would be the heating oil. Bid, it went out, and then for municipal and school district, it's under $100,000. You don't have to go out to bid.
I believe that's $50,000, Jeff.
You have to get three quotes, which we have three quotes in here. From Fraticelli Oil and Pelphane, Peterson Oil.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Does Bob have anything to say to us about these?
If I may, Mr. Chair, as you see, you got your three quotes. I believe the acting TA said she was going to leave you some footnotes and notes, which I don't have. You have Fraticelli, which came in at the lowest at $2.58.
Yes.
And you have Peterson Oil at $2.60, $2.60 a gallon, which I would have not suggest you not to approve because we had lousy service with them three or four years ago, and I got enough documentation to legally oversee that one. And then you got Hefners at $2.75. We did have Fraticelli Oil a couple of years ago. Their service was good, just as good as Hefners. And I believe we're going to be saving almost 10 cents compared to last year. I don't have that information in front of me, but it did go down from last year, which is good news. So I recommend the board, if they would approve Fraticelli Oil, and I'm not sure what that note. Do you have that note, Mr. Chair?
About not only the oil, but the extended service?
No, this was, I believe, the acting TA was asking you to give me the approval to authorize the contact with Fraticelli Oil with the contract. I don't know if Kelsey might have it, or... No, Holly was supposed to leave a note, recommend and give me authority to proceed forward with signing the contract and move forward with Fraticelli Oil.
Bob, can you refresh my memory? I think it was Peterson, a few years back. We kept running out of oil in a number of town buildings. Was that correct?
Yeah, 100% correct. And we had many problems with repair service and the new installation of the furnace at the library. They did.
Yeah, and if memory does serve me correctly, that actually got elevated to the state level, and they were removed off the state bid process for a number of years because of it as well. We were not the only town impacted by them.
Correct. And I believe they have a couple lawsuits on them as well.
Yep, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I have a second question.
Yes.
Is the maintenance and service included in the bid, or do you have a separate maintenance?
If I may, how that works is they do the oil. It's going to be automatic delivery. If I need furnace repair or service, it's called upon an additional fee of the building around the budget. they, they do the oil, it's gonna be automatic delivery, if I need furnace repair or service, it's called upon an additional fee, the building around's budget.
Right. The only reason I ask is that, why, why shouldn't oil company provide service because they, are they gonna make sure your furnace is at the optimum usage?
Yeah, every year, we service the furnaces, furnace at each location. It makes it easier working with the, the oil company because if there is a run out, there's, there's no charge the way it's set up.
Chair?
Yes.
I move to award the heating oil contract as presented for Fraticelli Oil and propane for the twenty twenty-six fiscal year.
A second?
I would ask you if you would amend that to include, to authorize Bob Sozik?
I amend my motion?
To sign all the later documents.
I amend my motion.
I have all the documents.
I know the documents.
Thank you.
First second then.
Have a motion made, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. On the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
Ms. Tove?
Yes.
And I will yes. Now you can leave, Mr. Sozik, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I really had trouble hearing the motion. Did, did you give me the authority to move forward, or?
Yes, I did, we did, and I will email you that, so I'm sure you know that.
Okay, very good.
Michael.
Thank you, have a good night, people.
Good night, Bobby Bob.
Now we have a another donation for the senior center by Valerie and John Lloyd in the amount of twenty dollars. When I see these, it doesn't matter if it's twenty bucks or four hundred dollars. It's very much appreciated and these small dollars add up and they they spend quite a few of them over the the last year or so. It's, you know, keep your care and it's trying to help out. What I think is one of the most important buildings and services in the, in the town, and that is the senior center and our service. If you're not there yet, you will be a senior soon and they have a lot of services, a lot of stuff to, to help out, information wise and, and otherwise.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanna let people know that you don't have, like, what they think is old is not really that old, you're just in your fifties to go down there and get one of those key card things.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve the senior center donation in the amount presented. Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion?
Can't just echo you, a big thank you, all these donations do indeed add up.
On the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yep.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
Ms. Tove?
Yes.
And I will yes. And again, to Mr. Valerie and John Lloyd, thank you so much, very much appreciated. Back to the opioid settlements, Middu, Fana, Sato and Santos. This is the time where we will be going into executive session, we'll be coming back out for a vote on this. Then we will be returning. We'll have member comments and return to executive session to discuss contract negotiations with non-union personnel with town administrator. I move to enter into executive session on the Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one dash three, to discuss strategy regarding litigation, opioid litigation update, where the open meeting would be detrimental effect on this litigation position, as Chair so declares. We will reconvene back in instant session before we vote on opioid litigation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to go into executive session. Any discussion on the motion?
No.
On the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Tove?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And I vote yes. So concerning the opioid settlements and in a motion for the chair to sign, Doc to sign related to the opioid settlements for Purdue Pharma, Sackler and Santos.
Second.
Yes, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
On that, should we be adding the secondary opioid manufacturers in Alvegin, Amneal, Opatex, Apatex, Hikma and so forth?
We guys have the motion from
That was a suggested motion.
Oh. Yes.
Just a motion. Suggested motion.
So I'd amend that motion to authorize the chair to execute the participation forms necessary to participate in the settlement of national opioid litigations with the Dune Sacklers and the eight so-called secondary opioid manufacturers, Alvegin, Amneal, Apatex, Hikma, Endevia, Mylan, Sun and Rivas.
I will amend the second.
Any discussion on the motion? On the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
Ms. Thope?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And that is end of a regular agenda with the exception of going into executive session for strategy for non-union personnel at Town Administrator. I will do board comments.
Do we want to make a thing to go past ten o'clock? Well, do we need that? Is it good?
Be there.
I think, who knows? We don't need it with
To be, yeah, to be safe.
Make a motion to go past ten o'clock?
Motion made to work past ten and seconded. Any discussion?
Nope.
On the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
Ms. Thope?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So, uh, board member comments, Mr. May?
I'm good.
Ms. Graves?
Yes, um, I just wanted to say a couple of things, but Bob gave us the update on Skuff Hall, so. I just wanted to say that I did, when I did a lot of research lately, I watched other town meetings and one thing I really, I liked was the fact that they called it administrator report. We call it administrator comments. But there was also a thing, sometimes they did it with their clerk, sometimes the town administrator did it, but they gave a rundown on what was going on in the community. It was like a little community, like they had like a page and then they read, you know, the different events going on for the month and stuff. And I thought that was maybe something that we could look into. Possibly doing that ourselves. I thought it was really excellent how the, how the different communities did that. But that said, movie, there's a movie night this Saturday night at Gilman Way. It's a free movie being put on by our Parks and Rec Department. It's a cash concession stand. It's on, you know, September thirteenth, Saturday. Movie starts at dusk and then playing the movie sing. For all ages, bring your blankets and your chairs. And I think, yep, that's it. That's all I got. Thank you.
Ms. Bassel?
I've got nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Thope?
I have nothing to add.
I have one comment. It concerns the the Town Administrator Screening Committee, which was composed by April Kovar, Jackie Pine. I apologize if I messed this name up. Matt Pesezny and I will mention Bill Cummings. The Screening Committee, they did an awesome job understanding the importance and time-sensitive nature of the task. They met three times in one week to go through eighteen resumes and give this board two qualified applicants, experienced applicants for us to consider for the next Town Administrator of Templeton. So on behalf of the board, I thank that committee of those volunteers for their work. Again, they, they met three times in a week. They went through a lot of resumes. So again, thank you to those residents, those volunteers. Now, the last thing we have to do is we've now chosen a candidate, so we will be going, entering into executive session for contract negotiations and to he said, I will concede that that salary then puts in, et cetera. So I would move to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A dot one, to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the Town Administrator, and where an open meeting would be detrimental to the effects on the negotiations, and the CHS O declares, we will reconvene in open session for adjournment only.
Any discussion on the motion? On the motion, to enter into executive session, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
Ms. Thope?
Yes.
And I vote yes.